Welcome to the meeting tonight. And at this time, we always begin our meeting with a prayer and we have the pledge of the flag. So if everyone will stand, please. And Commissioner McPeters will lead us into prayer for the night. And then Commissioner Crawford will listen to the pledge.
Spire hands. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we thank you for another beautiful day to begin us. Thank you for the snow, for the water, dear God, that provides for our land, dear God, and for the time we had with the family out enjoying that. Father, we just want to thank you for your many blessings of life this time of year. We just come out of Thanksgiving season, supposed to be thankful for. Now we're going into the celebration of birth of your son, Jesus. And God, help us always remember that through the meaning of Christmas, it's not about presents and it's about the greatest gift that was ever given, that's your son, Jesus, to die for our sins. Lord, he came to this world to die. And God, we just want to say thank you for that. And Father, we pray that you'd help us here tonight in this meeting. We pray that we conduct the business of the county. Or that we've prayed about it, we've looked over the Lord, the agenda. And Father, we pray that we do what's right for the citizens of this county and that you would get honor and praise out of what we do here tonight. We would please you, most of all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ladies. At this time, we have the minutes from November's regular session and the special call meeting. What's the pledge of the board concerning the minutes?
Most of the pledge.
Have a second.
Say it.
Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye opposed, aye. As gentlemen, we have our agenda, of course. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Michael, Mr. Murphy, the gentleman said.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, aye. Okay, first item on our appointment schedule, gentlemen, is the selection of the chair and vice chair. This happens every December. And at this time, we turn the meeting over to our clerk. So Madam Clerk, the meeting is yours.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I will ask for nominations for the position of chairman of the board.
Madam Clerk, I'll make the current seat chairman David Walker chairman.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I'll make a motion with seats nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Walker as chairman, please state aye.
Aye.
All right. At this time, I will take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Matthew Crawford.
Do we have any other nominations?
Baron Peters.
Do I have a motion nomination seats?
Seventeen. Six.
Okay, all in favor of Matthew, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Commissioner McPeters, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is Commissioner McPeters as vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, gentlemen, I will say it's an honor to serve the board, first of all, and appreciate this board and the membership we have and the dedication to work and get people's business done. And Commissioner, we plead with the vice chair, anything you want to add, please.
No, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as a vice chair. I'll do everything I can to uphold the standards of this board and we'll continue to work.
Okay, at this time, we need you to make a note that we have a seat vacant. Mr. Brown is out of the township of Marion on a trip, so he won't be here tonight. So do we note that, Madam Clerk, that he is unavailable to be here? At this time, let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. We have a 5:10 appointment. This is the universal property planning discussion. And we have Mr. Chuck Abernathy, who used to sit in Ashley's seat for many years, and Ashley is now the man in charge and doing an excellent job. Chuck, you did a good job training him all those years, and we appreciate Ashley, the work he does and the work you did when you were here. So, in your new, or where your current capacity, sir, if you don't mind, come forward and talk to us about the universal property.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all that you do and your hard work and your good work. You're making a lot of progress. I have to say, I don't miss being here. Or being here only on occasion. So we've got about 20 minutes to discuss a fairly complicated item. I don't know that everything would be resolved related to it. The Economic Development Board, of which Tony Brown is the commissioner that serves on that, and Ashley serves on it, has been working on this on and off for probably 24 months, but real hard for about six months. And what I'm presenting to you, they are recommending as a general matter. What's happening in the state of North Carolina right now is fascinating to see. I'm not sure how much the public or others pick up on it, what's happening. But there is a tremendous activity, a tremendous upswing in manufacturing and business interests looking to locate in the state. The state was recently named the top state in the nation by site selection and second by another group. So North Carolina competes very well, and the economy is obviously very positive. And so things are really happening. What that has done is created a challenge, and it's a changing challenge. It's shifting. But for quite a number of years, almost every project that came in was looking at an existing building. They wanted to see existing buildings only. And why would you want to do that? Well, because you can buy for $10 or $15 a foot an existing building, and new construction might be $60 a foot. So, and there was an abundance of empty buildings. A county near us has 11 empty buildings right now. McDowell County really has, is very limited in this area. Have a couple of small metal buildings, and that's as far as a good, modern building. We have nothing. So everything that comes across for us right now, looking at a building, a lot of the times we have to sit those out. And I'm going to read you a text that I, or an email that I got on Friday, that will show you that. The other thing that companies are now gravitating towards where it's going are what's called shovel-ready sites. And so, a lot of times, not really a lot of times, but often, they will, the companies will say, "We want an existing building or a shovel-ready site." I got a shovel-ready site request today. And what a shovel-ready site is, we have a small shovel-ready site in the industrial park that will accompany about 25,000, 30,000 square feet of a building. But that's all that we have there. So our product, I'm not making excuses, we've done very well, but our product is not where it needs to be. So my job is to make sure that all of you understand that and to give you some options, one of which would be a shell building. Let me read this to you, if I can pull it up real quick. It's kind of interesting. I won't read. Here we go. I won't read all of it, but enough of it to give you a flavor for it. This is how a lot of my activity works. An email comes in from the Department of Commerce, conducting a building search for Ellen's project, blank, see the attached file for project information and RFI questions. If you have buildings to be submitted, please complete the building search worksheet. Building submissions are due 5:00 on Thursday, et cetera, et cetera. So here's what we get. 350 employees, timeframe to be determined, average wage 60K, capital investment to be determined, decision second quarter 2018, prefer to purchase 100K to 200K building, which we don't have, must be standalone facility, so even universal, if it were empty, wouldn't work, must be, have good environmental background, ceiling heights 25 to 35, served by all industrial utilities, must have access to interstate. Boy, we hit all those, don't we? You know, utilities and interstate and et cetera, except the 100 to 200,000 square foot existing building, which we just don't have. So what we're doing with the universal property, we have got a master plan that is underway, and we applied back in July for a million and a half dollars of Appalachian Regional Commission monies to construct two roads. And let's see. I'll point them. What you, on your maps, we call this Pond Drive, not to name it that, but just because it's overlooking the pond, and we call this Shell Building Road, because this is where we would propose to put the shell building. So what you've got is a site that is not shovel-ready, but that is a good site. It shows very well, has everything in place, it's right off the interstate, it has the training center co-located with it, and it's right with the community college. So this is a great piece of property, and again, we're going to be very competitive with it. The million and a half ARC is, has been recommended by staff to the state and the state to the federal government. And so what my understanding is, is that when it goes from the governor's office to basically the executive branch of the federal government, that it's 99% a done deal. They don't get turned down once they are recommended to the federal government. But what happens to them is that they hit a very slow, difficult process. And we've experienced, everyone but maybe Lynn was here when we did, had some issues with ARC before, and they can just take quite a while to, quite a while to process. So in building these two roads, one of the things that we determined, the engineer determined, is that we can take the cut off of Pond Drive and deposit it where you see the two 50,000 square foot footprints, creating a pad. So we're going to create a shovel-ready pad. Now that's on city property, and I trust you guys are hard at work figuring all that out, but the city property is right up against the CSX railroad, right there. So we'll end up with the two roads being built, some of the grading being done off of what you see here as 100 and 200,000 square feet, and then a full pad on the 50 and 50. Okay, so is it, let me stop there. Everybody with me on that? Now, here's the challenge, and we've got, for example, a company coming in next week that's certainly substantial. And for me to say to this company that we've got a grant in and we're waiting on it and we'll be back with you, might as well just tell them to stay somewhere else, because that's not what does it. What I need to be able to say to them is that we're underway. And that's, I mean, if I can't say that we're underway with it, because they are making a decision first quarter of 2018. And again, we can, you can go into closed session and have a discussion, or please call me on the phone, and I can brief you on it. Getting started means, and Ashley and I are working through the details on this, is can we have the engineer do the design work and the bid documents and have the grant reimburse us for those costs? And that would really be what, kind of my brass ring, what I'm looking to accomplish on this. And the Department of Transportation is saying that that's questionable, whether or not they will agree to that, and so we're waiting on their word. Some ARC focuses will do that reimbursement, and some, you can't spend anything before the grant is actually awarded. And Ashley, you may have something in the day that is even, is more up to date, but they're kind of resisting that. I'm looking at to do the design and the bidding on both roads, it's going to be about $125,000, to do the design and the bidding on just Pond Road, which is really what I need, because the site they're looking at will be where the 100,000 square foot pad is, and that will actually be 200 coming this way. We've got several iterations on this, and that's going to be about 30 grand. And I can't guarantee, one, I can't guarantee we would get the grant, although it's highly likely, and two, I can't guarantee we would be reimbursed on it, but we're trying real hard. What I, I'll be honest with you, what I need to be able to do is tell the company that we're underway. That's one reason why I'm, why I'm here. Second, there are things happening with the state and a couple of very large projects looking at other locations in the state that are going to cause a lot of activity. Everybody understands, 12, the 12 thing is looking at the Greensboro area, and if that kind of thing happens, you know, then there's what are called tier one suppliers that will want to co-locate near it in three hours from Greensboro is near. So we're, you know, and again, we're getting activity on our own right right now. We just don't have the right product. We're a little behind the eight ball right at this minute, so we kind of, so the question of proceeding with this first part of the road, I guess, is a question. And then the second is, I wanted to discuss with you and have you thinking of what's called a shell build, or a speculative build, which we've done before. We did 100,000 square foot shell building in the industrial park, and it landed Coby Boats. And then Coby Boats got taken out by the recession, and it's now an Italian company called Ashland Land, which does pressure buses.
And Chuck, that building is, how long was it when Coby went out, till the Italian company went in?
Probably a year.
That's pretty quick.
It was quick. And it worked real well for us.
And they've been there how many years since?
10 years.
And employed how many?
100 and probably 40, and plenty, well.
Hey, a shell building is, if you don't have the buildings to market, we've already seen it be successful here in McDowell County. And I was, while you were talking, I was going through your brochure of the different counties, and there's probably 12 or 13 shell buildings that have been erected in the state of different sizes. And I think myself, I'm 100% for having something that we can market, try to bring jobs here to get our people to work. So I mean, I'm all in on a shell building.
So, so real quick, a shell building can be any size. We've zeroed in on 50,000 square feet, because that's kind of an optimum. And if you look, you'll see that that's consistent with what you have across the state. I've copied you on 12 or 13. I think every shell building in North Carolina, I think, you might find a few. But there were about 70, and most of them were warehouses and finished buildings. But I think I've captured them all with that. And there's a variety of product there. But what a shell building is, is a, in this case, we would do metal, because it's less expensive. You've got basically, it's enclosed as a roof, a gravel floor, light heating, a fan to keep the mold down, some lighting, and that's it. But what you're showing, as opposed to nothing, you're showing of everything that's up and that can quickly, quickly be underway. I think it's important that the, the threat is that you get wrong with what you do, and so you do something that you then have to go back and undo, and so you're maximizing the flexibility of the site. So you want to do ceiling heights of at least 25, 26 feet. You want two dock doors, but you want to be able to add four or five more. You want to maximize the flexibility and also maximize the speed with which these things can happen. The whole idea that we've come up with is, it sounds kind of innovative, I guess, it's really not. It's something that other counties have done, and that is, what we're suggesting, is that the county partner with a contractor, and that the contractor put the shell building up and carry the cost of it, if you will, for three years. In other words, the county would not spend anything for that three-year period, but at the end of that three-year period, if the building failed to move, there would be an agreed-upon price.
At the very beginning?
That would be at the very beginning.
Right.
And the county would, must control what goes in. It doesn't work if you surrender that and somebody comes along and buy, you're not building it to sell it alone, you're building it to create jobs and investment and to sell it. So you have to control, to my mind, just as many exclamation points as I can put behind that, you need to control what goes in, because you might have something marginal that wants to go in, there are 10, 15 jobs and, you know, not all that great of a wage, but they're willing to pay the price for it. Here's what you're doing. You're taking the cost for the acreage, the cost for the grade, the cost for the water, the sewer, the natural gas, the fiber, the electricity, and that's all being eaten. And the contractor is putting the building up, and I don't know what that will run, let me tell you this, underline it in the minutes, if the price is too high, it won't work. You'll see me back out and say, forget it. Because if you end up with $40 a foot on a shell building and it's another 40 to finish it out, it doesn't work. So you really have got to get the price down, or you're going to be supplementing it even more. And so that's, that's just very important. So I have met with, I've talked to several contractors, I've met with one. The process is something that you really do want to think through, and probably the process needs to look something like a formal bid, with it being the reverse, where you're, well, not the reverse, you're still taking the low bid, the low sales price. So anyways, let me look at my memo and make sure I'm not, so six acres of that 100,000 square feet, and acres in the 40,000 square foot range, so you're looking at two acres under roof. So you're looking at about six acres of property. 50,000 square feet is what's recommended. You could do 40, and I've actually thought of that, you know, just to get the price down. But when you get the price down and you're doing things that limit you on the other end, you've got to have sufficient parking and truck turnaround. And again, we're looking at doing the site work largely, if not entirely, through the ARC grant. I would run the utilities to the site. You're only coming off College Drive, and the sewer follows the stream, but you've got utilities largely on the site. But I would hold off extending them all the way to the building until a company located to maximize grants. Again, the price is key. Without a price that works, then I'll be the first one to walk away and leave it if we can't get a good price. The specs would need to be agreed upon. Contractors know these kind of things. When you sit down with them, they know what a seamless roof is and, you know, what the crane, what supports this level of crane and et cetera, et cetera. So you want their input, but so the county and the contractor agree. The building and the land would have to be owned by the contractor for three years. So you would be actually taking the land and transferring it to the contractor. Again, you've got a contract governing that. You're agreeing on a price. Contractor erects the building per the agreed-upon specifications. County agrees to purchase the building in the event that it does not move at the agreed-upon price at the end of three years. So you would need to decide, do you, you know, do you, what, fund balance or finance or whatever you do. That would be up to you guys. You would reserve the right to go with a lower price and incentivize a location going in. You could sell it for less, but the contractor would get the agreed-upon amount, so you would be paying the contractor the balance if that were to happen. County must have the final, I've said it 10 times, forgive me, but the county has to have the final decision in approving the sale. The EDC board discussed, well, what if they want a lease? And what I would do in the contract documents is just say that it requires a consensus of the county and the contractor on a lease arrangement, if somebody wanted to do that. It'd be hard to work details out on what you wanted as a lease and what term and all that kind of thing. The build-out, which is, the contractor is looking at this, and not guaranteed the build-out, but it would be highly likely that whoever put the shell building up would also get to finish it and would probably do the additional square footage and might get other activity going on. So this is, this is a business deal, and it is something that is structured in a way that a contractor could benefit and the county, and the county benefit as well.
Chuck, let me see if I understand correctly. First thing to moving forward is the road grading and the site prep?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And that's going to be pretty much our initial investment?
Well, yeah, there's really, there's really two things. One, you nailed the first one. And the second one would just be, are you okay with what I'm, with this concept? And there's a lot of work still to do. But I've got some things going on that cause me to need to be underway January, February, and March. So we have time, but I wish I was here in July, not December. Don't have as much time as what I would like, in other words. Makes sense?
Where did you determine your estimate for the road grade at 30,000?
From the engineer, Alliance.
Okay.
How much flexibility there is? Like, do we pull back from paving the road or the curbing? You know, what do we do? Really, it's just one of those things, we did this very quick, turned the grant around in a week. I did a second grant or a pre-application on a grant for $750,000 for site grading. Probably won't get it, but you know, if you're not in there, you're right, Ashley?
That's right.
So I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and so I don't expect, you know, a blanket concrete proceeding, but it would be nice to direct us to be able to proceed on the design and the contracting of that first road. And then if you have issues with what I've presented on the shell building, what are they? And how do we get that to a point where, all we're looking at is a process where you guys can look at prices and make a decision, not trying to back you in a corner at all. And in fact, the threat to this is that your price will be too high and you'll be left holding it, and so the price is going to have to come down. And in my mind, that's less than $30 a foot. Okay. So the road and the site prep, 30,000, no? Just the roads? But what 30,000 will do is the design on the one road. Okay. And it will take, it will take you to bid, so that you can open bids. And what we're not able to say is that you'll be reimbursed for it, and that kind of upsets me. It seems like that would be a simple thing to do.
But if we get the ARC grant, though, we would be...
That's what we're not able to say. If you spend it before...
I'm just saying, okay.
Then we're not going... Then we're not guaranteed to be reimbursed.
Well, that grants how much, Chuck?
A million five.
I spend thirty thousand dollars getting a million five any day. The possibility of it and understanding, you may not get it.
And let me be clear again, the thirty thousand is for the design?
And the bid documents.
Okay, but not the grade?
Oh, no.
Yes, sir. Right, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
In other words, what I can now do is say, yeah, we're underway. We've got the design being done and the things going to contract. It's going to bid.
Okay.
And that just changes a hundred and eighty degrees what I'm saying. It's a whole lot better for us.
Ashley, anything you would add to this?
Anything, there's always risk, but the thirty thousand to get ahead of the project would be worth moving forward.
And I didn't have the thirty until Friday, I guess, when we were talking to, I said, well, you're at a hundred and twenty-five for both. What if we break off the one? And he said, well, that would be...
And the reason is because that, the pond road is much shorter than the shell road.
Yeah.
There's a big difference.
So that's, I guess, what we're putting before you, trying to be successful.
Basically, take it to, break it down two ways. And the thirty thousand dollars, when would you need that?
In my mind, January one.
January one.
January ten.
So that'd be a budget amendment?
As far as, you wouldn't pay it then.
I thought she wasn't backing us in the corner. I'm teasing.
Well, that would be underway. Here's the other thing, and Ashley caused me to think of this. The million five is tied to the federal budget. And so I asked ARC, Olivia, you know, what's the best case that we'll be notified, that we're getting the money? She said, January. I said, what's the worst case? And I don't believe her on this. She said, late spring. And I think that would be very good if we had word by then even. So the problem is, is that if the federal government gets into some kind of budget block, then ARC could be held up within that. Could be back asking for more. You know, if that project, you know, said they want the site.
Comments, questions?
You've got two different questions. So your opinion on the shell building plus the road, right?
Yes, sir.
I personally, those who take risks get the profits from it. I have no problem with the shell building.
Okay, and the road, too?
I'm fine with the road, too.
Yeah, I think the same thing. The road, shell building, I even thought about the second pad there, because I looked over at Dave and I said, as you're going, why not lock out the two birds with one stone and save that much more money? But, I mean, you've been around a whole lot longer than I have with that, Chuck. And we looked at that shell building, when I first came on the board and we were talking about how that, you know, we did weight on the curbing and the stuff going up to Kobe. Then once we landed, it moved forward with the finishing product.
You're more than right. I think you're going to have some rough grading on those upper pads as well.
Right. I mean, you know, just walking that property several years ago, but, I mean, I think, I wish we was moving forward. Like you say, I wish it was July last, it's past July. But I'm ready to move dirt. That's the thing.
All right?
It's time.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Richard Green.
If you have questions, I'm good.
You good with it?
I'm good. If you have questions, Lynn, or any of you, call me.
You got your direction?
Want to get in the car one day and drive around? I'll be glad to do that.
All right, move forward, both accounts. All right, thank you, Chuck. This time, let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. And this is concerning the Transportation Department, soon to be up and running Transportation Department here in downtown county. And we have Mr. Randall Conley, who has been named the Director of this newly-formed department. And Mr. Wood, is there anything you need to add before Mr. Conley goes ahead and begins?
Yeah, I'll preface just very quickly. So last month, I hinted that we were maybe close to having a staff person hired. And I believe it was maybe the next day that we had made the selection of Mr. Conley. So we were really close at that point. Randall has, gosh, going back about three years, I guess, interned with the county. And his internship focused a lot on transportation. And then, once he was hired to work with us, worked a great bit in that area. So it just was a natural fit. So again, Randall is our Transportation Director. And for right now, that function is housed and DSS. So he's over there and working on a daily basis. Fiscally effective July one is our hope and our intention that it be a separate department. So we're essentially treating Randall like a department head as of right now. So all the lumps and bruises and calling about when it's snowing, what to do with drivers and all that, it's all on his shoulders now. So what he's going to do, and again, I'll turn it over, but we've talked about this quite a bit, he's going to go over some policies and procedures that are required. And I'll allow him to introduce Ms. Baptiste that's here, but go over the policies and procedures, go over the Transportation Advisory Board bylaws that you've had for several months now. And you have a slate of applicants that we're looking for appointment tonight. I believe that's it. So we may go kind of back and forth and try not to pull things up. Randall, you may want to introduce Ms. Baptiste, who's here as well.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'll first like to say thank you for allowing me to come before you as the new Transportation Director. I'd also like to say thank you for those who've been working on getting public transportation for our county for several years. And also want to give a special thanks to all the work of Terry Evans while he was our Transit Coordinator. Our county has been doing as much as we possibly can with transporting citizens under our small scope of Transit Service. We have been making runs for the senior center, Medicaid clients, community members of West Marion District, and just received a grant for ninety-nine thousand dollars from KB Reynolds to begin serving the East Marion District along with the Men's and Women's Homeless Shelter. We are anticipating, we are anticipating hearing from NCDOT maybe later on this week on how much our admin budget will, we will receive in the first year of becoming a public transit, which we have Ms. Jennifer Baptiste here with us in attendance.
Have you, Ms. Baptiste?
Hello.
A lot's been going on these past several days. I've been learning a lot about the system and trying to learn ground up so far for my drivers and getting out, doing driver evaluations and learning about the clients in these last couple of days I've been serving as a department head. This evening, I would like to run down a list of the policies that went before you last meeting for first reading. As I go through the list, there's a few additions to those policies. As I go through the list, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. I also prepared a document for you guys. It's basically, I call it a policy cheat sheet. So you've got all the policies I'm going to be reading off with a summary of them.
We like quick notes.
Thanks, sir.
You are.
Thanks, sir. As you've seen in last month's packet, those policies are kind of thick and there's a lot to read. So I'm just going to go off the list and if you have any questions, please, like I said, feel free to stop me. These policies have already been approved by the state, but will need to be adopted by our county. And on that, we have the ADA policy, we have a cash management policy, a charter policy, a procurement policy, an open meeting policy, a personnel policy, a travel policy, and our rules and procedures. And the few additions that you may not have seen in the last month's packet is our vehicle advertisement policy, which states that if any entity wishes to place an advertisement on any of McDowell Transit's vehicles, McDowell County Transit Director slash Operations Manager must have final approval on all proposed advertisement. And we also have, as an addition, McDowell County's fleet vehicle policy. And that states if any, that county vehicles are provided to support county activities and are used to be qualified and authorized by employees. In all cases, these vehicles are to be operated in strict compliance with the motor vehicle laws of the jurisdiction in which they are driven and used with the utmost regards to their care and cost-efficient use. County vehicles may not be used for business activity other than companies. And also, we have our record revision continuity of operations plan, which basically is a plan, is an effort within an individual executive department or agency to ensure the primary mission essential functions continue to be performed during a wide range of emergency, including local, accident, technical, technology, can't talk, I'm sorry, technological or attack-related emergency, which I had my first this past Friday. So that was nice and a good experience for me to get under my belt. Again, these policies have already been approved by state and will need to be adopted by this county. And again, you have received the policies last meeting. And I don't know if you had, hopefully you had time to go through all of it and it was a lot. And you have a couple more to check out on your free time, so.
You have a policy on wearing steeler ties?
You know, it's funny, when I was interning, I had a policy on nonprofits I presented to the commissioners. That was my first time presenting to you guys and I wore this tie. And you gave me a hard time.
As a director, Randall, when did you, you need to wear a Cowboys tie in the board.
Okay, Lynn, let's proceed on with the meeting. Any questions on any policies or...
He handled that good.
We're going to buy you one, Randall.
And I'm going to get you all a Stertide as well.
I have one.
Okay, any comments regarding the information Randall's given concerning the policies that are approved by the state that the county needs to adopt to move forward?
Well, they, and I may be way too far ahead on the bylaws, on the makeup, the composition of the committee, is the Veterans Affairs. Could they be part of that also, do you, with them? Somebody was just talking to me this past week and they was very appreciative of our board, what we've been doing for them. But is that something we can add or is that something we even, we're just leaving it alone or is it's...
We could, and I think the consideration was that Wayland possibly could cover that since it's under his supervision there.
And there are seven at-large, non, in the appointments, and five, there's still two seats remaining, right? So anybody like the Director of that could actually apply because they're not all filled, right, Randall?
Yes, sir.
There's just five of the seven at-large seats that still remain to be filled.
Sure.
Correct.
So if anybody's watching who has a desire to be involved in transportation, here's your opportunity to be a part of the solution. See Randall or see the county clerk here and she'll go ahead and give you application.
We'd love to have you.
I think I was raising them two, too. They want to join.
They want to be drivers.
We've got a nurse going on.
Represent the cricket.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board concerning, we need to adopt these tonight, correct?
On the policy.
On the policy.
Make a motion, we approve all the policies.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side, okay?
Make a motion and we also approve the bylaws.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, Randall, thank you. Listen, we look forward to what you're going to do with that department. And I've always said this, I said, when Chuck brought you on as an intern, I said at that time, I said, Randall's a rising star in this county. And three years later, you've been named Director, Department Head. So the board's behind you a hundred percent and you keep working hard and great things happen to those who work hard in life.
Yes, sir, thank you for the support.
Yes, you're welcome. One more item.
Board members? You've approved...
Oh, we've got to have a commissioner. Is there a commissioner who has desire to serve on that board? Got interest in that transportation?
We can do a quick overview of that. So the state does require you have a Transportation Advisory Board, which you've approved the bylaws. It's a fifteen-member board. And what we are proposing over the past few months, you've seen sort of the layout essentially. You'd have a representative from MITA, Foothills Industries, McDowell Chamber, Senior Center Director, right in front of me, why am I trying to do it from memory? DSS, Senior Center, Isothermal Rural Plan Organization, EMS, Community Paramedic, and a Commissioner. So you've got five plus ten seats that we're looking to have essentially approval tonight. You have a slate in front of you and it's a little confusing because we have Group One and Group Two. And the reason we did that is to create some staggered terms. So that way, you're not appointing ten people or whatever and then they're all rolling off. So Group One, just to read it for the public in the minutes, you would have the MITA seat, the Foothills Industries seat, and then we've just called it Seat One, Seat Two, and Seat Three. Group Two is McDowell Chamber and then Seat Four, Five, Six, and Seven. And so we took applications and we just went alphabetically for the most part. So we have, and again, we try to be fair and, you know, throw it in there. So MITA seat, we're awaiting a nominee from that board. Foothills Industries, Joyce Schuford has applied. She is a longtime member of the Transportation Planning Board and has been asked to represent that entity. We have applications from Lloyd Cuthbertson, Sandra Miller, Linda Mystic, Ginger Webb, and Joyce Poplin. And you can see how we've sort of assigned them to different seats. And then for the McDowell Chamber seat, we have Donna Ledbetter, who's been put forth by that board to represent that entity. So then the four staff people, Lisa Sprouse, Wayland Prebor, Carol Fuller, and Chad Robinson, they would serve just by virtue of their position. And then we're asking for you gentlemen to appoint one of your members to represent as well. So that would leave two seats plus the MITA seat that's still to be determined.
Okay. Who's got desire?
Sure, I'll do it. I don't mind to do it unless someone else wants to do it. I definitely should leave.
Okay. To hear a motion, does that fit?
Question, report, Matthew Crawford.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, thank you, Mr. Crawford, be willing to serve on that position right there. All right.
And you approved this slate. So this would be the kick it off and to really help Randall and Ms. Baptiste move forward.
Sure, sure. Okay, gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the Transportation Advisory Board proposed initial composition?
Move that we approve Group One and Group Two.
All right, discussion, all of those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light side. Okay. All right, Randall? Up and running?
Thank you.
Or rolling, up and rolling, not running, right?
Rolling.
Okay. Ms. Baptiste, good to have you tonight with us. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, too. All right, let's move to our next item. We're a little ahead of schedule now. Let's go to old business item A, courthouse update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, and lead us out if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. And I'll mention, there's a resolution in the packet for this item. We're going to put off until January because we need a little more information. But I will go over the, sort of, an update from where we were last month. Right before or after last month's meeting, there was a meeting with the court folks about this project, just an update on where everything stood. It's good, they're the tenant and they need to know what's going on. There was a discussion on essentially closing down the courthouse for whatever length of period and relocating court functions for whatever length.
period, and relocating court functions for whatever length. Mr. Chairman Walker was at that meeting, and Commissioner Brown, and the overwhelming consensus was to ride it out.
Yeah, you had Judge, I'll tell the, the parties that were there present, Architect was there, he presented information to Judge Powell, presented Judge Davis, Tommy Davis, and to the DA was tied up, but he sent Kent Brown, Assistant DA to the meeting, Clerk of Court was present, and then Commissioner Brown and myself. And when they heard the information, their take was, they went through this process once in Rutherford County, two of the judges present, they said they would assume stay here and stay put, and the clerk, the clerk, she said she would rather stay here because all her records ever, every document would have to go out of this building, or out of that building, and it would have to be under lock and key guard, and they said it would be just monumental, and then finding a place to house that whole entire operation because it all would go. We don't have site, I mean, and just to run the fiber from this building over to the House Theater, when we use that, was $20,000. You gotta have fiber and you got phones, and they, they were just, just wasn't even a question to them. They said, we'll stay put. And one thing the judge said, they could schedule court around, and the, the big courtroom, whatever work needed to be done on the current existing big courtroom, they could do that when they were not in session. So, they, there's things that they could do to help out from the judiciary system side of it.
So, the information from that meeting was very helpful for the architect to sort of plan out the way the work would flow. There are some options for, that they would work into the work plan for keeping the building open to the public, but also allowing the work to take place. So, with that in mind, and several meetings that have been necessary with his engineers and staff, he has asked that bidding be let on January 17th. Now, we originally had talked about, I think, December 11th, actually, but he needs the additional time that it's taken to get to that point. So, that would move opening of bids to February 21st. A public hearing, again, off our normal schedule, but February 27th, 2018. Then March 1st, we the deadline to send it to the local government commission. That commission meets April 3rd, and then if they approve it, the earliest you could award contracts would be April 4th. So, there's timing with the, you really have to look at the local government commission calendar and back it backwards, and take into account weekends and holidays and all that, and that's where we end up with the 17th of January. Having opening bids on the 21st of February allows, you know, enough time to hold those bids where they're, would not be avoided by the contractor. So, I have asked for an updated estimate, and so we will have that for you at the January, January meeting, just so we know where we are. So, again, there's a lot of work to get ready to bid the project. Obviously, it would take a lot of work, so appreciate the understanding for the slight delay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move to item B, under old business, the shooting range update, and Ashley, if you don't mind, go ahead, sir, and Ron, you want to add to this, since you've been involved with it, you can go next.
Yes, sir. So, last month, we mentioned the state was going to schedule sound tests for the county, and they did November 28th. This is an independent third-party group that comes in, and they do all kinds of sound testing based on different types of really guns that are shot that day. And so, they take that information, and they go back and they analyze the results, and they will present that at their public meeting probably in January. And so, we've mentioned that we're on the state's schedule, but they will have the public meeting, and based on those comments, well, they will receive public comment at that point, of course, and then present the sound test findings, the public comments, and any other data at their Wildlife Resources Commission meeting, probably in March, and we will probably, if that's the case, make an effort to attend. Again, I mentioned, they have been very happy about the local enthusiasm, because sometimes they will, like I said, they will, they'll look at a state map and say, where do we need a range, and they'll just kind of pick out a county, and it's based on geography. It's a little bit different in this case where the county commissioners went to them and said, we know you want to be in this area.
I think we pursued them.
Very much so.
And tracked them down.
And dragged them here a little bit. But again, they're, they like that a whole lot. They, they like to feel wanted where they're doing something like this, or they would spend a lot of federal and state money, and so that's a big deal to be in a community that wants them, so.
I mean, how many different groups have, have actually went on record and sent, you've got the McDowell Tech Board Trustees, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Marion, I think sent something, so host school board, the school board is, is on board, is supportive of this, so we're excited about it.
So, probably the next thing will be the public meeting, and we don't, don't know a date yet, but they have told us they are aiming for January, so as soon as we know the date, we will definitely let you know.
Okay, sounds great. Very, very positive. Ron, anything you need to add to that? Okay. All right, let's move to our next item, item C, under old business, and this is the Stacy Hill Road in the interlocal, right between the county and city. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So, we have talked several times about the construction of a water line on Stacy Hill Road. This is something we've wanted to do for a long time, and we finally have some grant assistance to do it. One of the issues when we started looking at the project, our master meter is at the intersection of US 70 and NC 126. And engineering-wise, it's better to have one master meter instead of two, so we made the request to the city to move that master meter to the intersection of Stacy Hill and 70. The city manager mentioned that the original interlocal agreement between the city and county was about 10 years old and was about to expire, so it made sense to just tie the two together. So, you, what you have is an agreement that runs for another 10 years, that essentially guarantees a water source for us for that period, guarantees the rate for that period, but also moves that master meter closer to Stacy Hill. There are some minor issues about, if you remember, there's a parcel there that was annexed, anticipation of some commercial development years ago. That's covered in the agreement, where that one parcel would be a city customer if it is developed, but otherwise, the existing customers would come over to the county. Essentially, it, it helps us out, it does guarantee the city water sales from a pretty large customer for 10 years, so they like that as well.
Is that a standard term? I was looking at that. What, what was our previous term?
It was 10.
10, okay.
And there are outs. If we were to construct a water intake, we can give notice and leave the, leave the agreement.
Okay. Which that is where the end goal result, what we're working toward anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, comments, questions regarding the interlocal agreement?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement. Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, motion say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Let's move to item D. We're back on our appointment schedule now, gentlemen. This is the health update via, did I say that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have Mr. Brian Shubin with us tonight. Ashley, you need to preface before Mr. Shubin starts?
Very quickly, again, Vaya, which I'm still in the center a little bit, but it was formerly known as Smoky Mountain Center, and going back before that, many different names, but essentially the mental health, substance abuse, and individuals with developmental disability. Did I do that right?
No, you're doing good, yeah, I'm listening.
A week or so ago, went to the advisory board and tried to participate as often as I can.
Yeah, and that's one thing I was just going to praise, Ashley, he does a good job representing you guys at those types of meetings, and I think it was the seventh meeting that day, and he's in Asheville late for that, so we appreciate that.
Did he do his annual meeting?
No.
You can tell us, we won't say that.
He's on tape.
It's all very interesting.
Yeah, yeah. It's always just a lot of information. I think last time I came and talked to you gentlemen, maybe I gave you too much, so I'll try to pare it back this time. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come back, just give you an update, the way, you know, just want you to know, you know, what your citizens are getting and what supports, you know, we're able to, to provide. So, there's, there's four basic things I just want to kind of run through for this evening. Since the last time I came, we received a $7.1 million funding cut for state-funded individuals. So, you have kind of two, two groups of, of people in your communities, people that have Medicaid and people that, that don't qualify for Medicaid. So, that pot of money for those indigent folks continues to shrink. So, one thing we did to try to combat that was we tried to do some, some cost shifting to Medicaid, so get approval for some different Medicaid services that we thought would kind of fill that gap. So, we worked really hard this year to, to make sure that citizens here in McDowell didn't feel some impact of that shift, so I just wanted to highlight that. One thing, and I think you're hearing, you're probably hearing quite a bit about this, probably on the healthcare side, is just Medicaid transformation. So, North Carolina is working towards this Medicaid trans, Medicaid transportation, I'm taking Randall, not transportation, transformation, Randall got me off track there, working towards that for physical health, dental health, and behavioral health. So, for the last four years, on the behavioral health side, we've been a managed care organization. So, at the beginning of the year, the fiscal year, the state knew what they were gonna, what our expense would be at the end of the year. On physical health, that's not really been the case, it's kind of been all over the place the calls. So, they're really working to be able to manage all of those parts of health together moving forward. And what that means for a company like Vaya, who's been serving McDowell County, I, I worked for Foothills that served McDowell County years and years ago, is that your people then at some point in time, your citizens get kind of lumped into this bigger system transformation. So, what we're hopeful of, there's a lot of commercial plans that are coming in, the Blue Cross, the Aetna's, we'll say now about CVS, CVS purchasing on this, this weekend, but Aetna's, United Health, they're coming in to get North Carolina's business, and we're one of the eighth or ninth largest states, so they're really buying for that business. And what we hope at, at Vaya Health is that we still do specialty care for those providers. So, that's for three, four years down the road, but just want to keep you up to date on what's going on there. You'll probably be hearing a lot with Mission and different health providers on how that impacts them, but just want to keep you, you know, up to speed on that. In anticipation of that, Vaya, and I've got a folder, you guys can, can look at this information later if you would like, Vaya has put together a coalition of half of the managed care organizations across North Carolina, so there's six. So, there's three of us that have partnered together to really try to gain some efficiencies and get ready for that transformation. Got a website, it's really working towards whole-person care, which is the future, you know, not going to all these different providers, so I'll, I'll pass that out.
While he's doing that, maybe still on your line, Commissioner Crawford and I had a meeting at the hospital today, and that was the topic, was the Medicaid transformation, and talking about the whole person where you're not splitting the mental health and the, so it's on everyone's mind these days.
Yeah, so this alliance is with two other similar MCOs like Vaya. We cover 23 counties in western North Carolina, so with this alliance, it's about 52 counties across the state kind of together. They're setting a merger or anything like that for us at this point, it's just to try to gain some efficiencies, learn from each other, and the geography of this coalition is across the state, so there's a large group in the middle of the state that we've kind of partnered with and some folks out, the eastern part of the state. Just preparing and want you to be aware, I don't know if anybody will ask commissioners about that, but just information for you. And then the last thing I just wanted to share was a little bit about Vaya Total Care, I think we've talked about this before. And we did a small pilot here of about 200 of your citizens in McDowell County last year, and this was, we currently do care coordination, which is similar to case management, what a lot of people used to know it as. So, we did a small pilot of about 200 citizens that we worked to manage their entire care. So, we worked with their primary care physician, we worked to make sure they had dental care, worked with, you know, really having a real treatment team of their family and natural sports, really all around them. It was very successful here, and we've expanded that to all of our counties. We've also developed a data platform that really helps do a lot of that planning around the entire person. So, what we know about the populations we serve, and which would include folks here, is that a lot of folks with behavioral health issues don't really pay attention to their health needs. So, a lot of those folks, life expects them shorter, you know, have major medical issues as well, so really just trying to focus in on that, which will help with transformation. So, those were the couple things, probably too much information again, Mr. Chairman, but.
You're fine.
Just wanted to share those things, what we're doing, you know, to serve the community here. Ashley's a great, a great partner, and is very accessible to us, and we drag him to meetings and tell him lots more information than this, but, you know, just like to come every six months or so and, and keep you up to speed on what's going on.
Sure, yeah, Brian, I'm glad you're here. Any comments, questions by board members?
Brian, how's the kiosk doing at the library?
I don't have the data. I was going to try to get the data before we got here, so last time we were talking about the location of the kiosk, we did the unveiling, and Mr. Crawford and, and Mr. Wood was there. I hadn't seen the data yet, but I will bring that to you, gentlemen. I've not heard any complaints about it, so that's a good thing, and hopefully it's being utilized there. That, just to remind you, that was just kind of anonymous way to, to check on, you know, anything you were concerned about for yourself or a loved one, so.
Okay. Great. All right, sounds good. Well, we'll see you in about six months, my friend. Have a good evening, Brian.
Be warm and.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, this time let's move to item D, under old business, this will be the Greenway Project Resolution. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, and lead us out.
Yes, sir. Take you back a few months, you had a presentation from a gentleman named Squeak Smith, his name is Michael Smith, goes by Squeak, represents a company called Resource Institute. You entered into an agreement with the organization to write a grant with the state at that time. The state is through the Division of Water Resources, which is Department Environmental Quality Division. This agency has been preparing this grant application for a month or two. The deadline, I believe, is in March, but they'd like to get it in earlier, which is great. So, they have put forth the attached resolution for your approval. Essentially, what, and Mr. Harmon and I have met with them within the last week or so, essentially what you will have at the end of the day is the combination of this $500,000 state grant, the $250,000 Part F grant, and then the matching funds with that. So, you'll have about $1 million, mostly in grant funds, that will build the next phase of the Greenway, and do some other things that have, you know, some stream stabilization work that might be required, or canoe launches and that kind of thing. And so, the intent is to bid it out as one project, and probably looking at an April or May bidding, and so the idea is to have this application turned in, a quick turnaround and approval hopefully, and get the project going next summer. And again, I, this has been communicated with the Trails Association, because I know they, they're very interested in how it's moving, but it's, trying to coordinate the different grants is somewhat complicated and difficult, but we're trying to do it where it's all, all kosher, so we would ask that you approve the, the grant submission and the resolution.
And, and Mr. Wood, now this is a, our, our phase has three phases within it, so this will be the first phase of the three?
What this would do, the million dollars, this would do the county property, the Woody property, and the Miller property.
So, we're knocking out almost two phases?
Right, you would go. Right, you would go essentially from Greenley or Old Greenley, Greenley Road to Roby Conley Road.
With the majority of this being...
Mostly grants.
You can't beat that. It's even better. Because you have appropriated how much money in that item for trails?
The local match, which that includes city and some private, is about 250.
We've got that in hand, ready to...
Yes, sir, that's been building up over a number of years.
Okay, other comments, questions? Let's pleasure the board.
Motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like, aye. And I will say this, this board has been a partner with the Trails Organization and we've been committed to the extension of trails, McDowell County, and we think it's a positive thing. Help fight obesity and other factors that contribute to increase of health costs. We're doing our part to try to get trails so people can walk and get healthy. That might include us, too. All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. This is the item E, Blue Cross Mission Health Update. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Speaking of health costs, it has been the news, the newspapers, et cetera. Last week, Blue Cross and Mission did announce that effective December 15th, Mission Health will be back in the Blue Cross Network, which is definitely great news for the thousands of folks in this county that are Blue Cross members. It's also great news for us as an employer that has Blue Cross health insurance coverage for our employees. There are some questions we still have that probably will not have answers, at least for a week or two. We are interested in knowing if claims in that period will be backdated to be counted as in-network. I can understand why they wouldn't want to say that as of yet. They don't want people rushing between now and December 15th to get care and say, well, we thought it was going to be, you know... So we will ask them, because there are some folks that, you know, couldn't avoid medical care during that period and it would benefit them and the county if it was in a network, but... So we'll ask that question. As far as the process, we did go through an RFP process and look at the option of changing, which we didn't change effective January 1. But it did open some opportunities for us if we wanted to look for changing in July. And so we have time to do that and look, but just to keep that in mind, if you would like us to look at going back out to bid, we might actually have more interest since there's no conditions and strings attached. So if you would like us to, we can do that in the spring and get some quotes back effective July 1 for our regular term. We can do that. Something to think about. We don't need direction or decision tonight.
Okay, it's a positive thing. They've got their contract, it looks like, worked out between the two and that will help people in McDowell County and our employees. So that's always a good thing, when our people have access to the care, to the physicians they want to see and they're in-network. Let's move to our next item under New Business, item A. This is the Personnel Policy Revision. This is the first reading. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. We have noticed in looking at our practices for our employees, some of our employees, that the policy doesn't quite match up with the way things need to be. And specifically, several employees in our Public Works Department work 10-hour days. And the way the policy is written, there was no carve-out for them essentially being special employees. We had done that for Sheriff's Office and EMS employees, but not Public Works. So you can see the yellow text where Public Works was inserted in our vacation and sick leave sections. And essentially it allows, you know, them to be able to take, to work a 10-hour day. You know, they take vacations, they're taking 40 hours for that week. A lot of it's common sense, but the policy didn't quite match up. So we would ask that this be a first reading in January, we do the, per our policy, do the saccharine approval.
Okay, here's the first reading, gentlemen. This will be back on our agenda in January. Let's move to our second, next item, item B under New Business. This is the subdivision ordinance request to amend. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Right, and Mr. Harmon is here. This is somewhat similar. We're not asking you to approve any changes tonight, we can actually, but staff had encountered a few issues where we were having subdivisions that had been plotted, where they had road names that were similar to existing roads. And our process didn't allow staff across the street to say, wait a second, this is, we have an Oak Street already, or whatever. And so the planning board, it's a little bit different than, it's typically, you gentlemen are sending something down to them and back. But they have noticed this and they're asking that you amend the ordinance, subdivision ordinance. And so we can't do that before having notices in the newspaper in a public hearing. So staff is asking that you allow us to advertise and have a public hearing in consideration next month.
Okay, let's pleasure the board.
They want the EMS to find them. I recommend they do it.
It's pretty important.
Yeah. Make them, yeah, a public hearing. Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing is, I thought that this had already been put in place years ago because when we were doing 911 addressing, because of the duplicate road, evidently we just never put it in black and white.
I think the issue that's come up is not so much in new subdivisions, but more we have existing subdivisions that do a new phase. The developer will go ahead and put the road name on the plat and I'll sign off on the plat without sending it across the road. And then that road name gets registered with the registered deeds and that becomes an issue trying to get that changed.
So I remember at times we tried to get back and figure out which roads, but the person in charge at that time wouldn't step up and say, yeah, we're going to change it. So we had to leave things the way they were. But I thought all it knew in existence, so.
Little bit of a loophole.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, it'll be on next message agenda. Let's move to the next item, item C. This is the Fire Department Inspection Fee Waiver Request. Three departments are requesting this. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. There have been three requests that have come in. You've got those listed there, Hankins, North Fork, Ashford, North Cove, and Crooked Creek. All three departments are close to moving forward with either renovation, addition, or replacement, in the case of Crooked Creek. So we thought, we had the three requests come in that just kind of packaged them all at once. You know, they're not all starting next month, for example, but sort of fit the theme to do all three at once. But they have all asked that you waive the inspection fees for their projects.
Okay, let's pleasure the board.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like, aye. And let's go back and pick up that last motion with a second discussion. Let's vote on that now at this time, because we moved straight into item number D, or excuse me, C, without finishing the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like, aye. Okay, that is duly corrected. Madam Clerk?
Please, I have to keep you in straight.
All right, let's move on to item number D under New Business, Jury Commissioner Compensation. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Get caught up here. So within the last year or two, you have appointed someone to the jury commission, which is a little bit of a, maybe a quirk in the state statute. We have very little involvement with the court system, but there, you know, we do provide space for the courts. And one other area is that you appoint a member to the jury commission and also approve their pay. And so they have just finished out their two-year term and you have a memo from Ms. Adams, the clerk of court, where she is requesting for their effort that you pay them $500 apiece instead of 350. And then the request is based on the amount of work it is taking them to get a jury pool put together. And so she's saying it's a lot more work than it would have been. So for two years' work, it's a pretty good deal, I guess, for $1,500 total.
What's standard in state? I mean, I'm sure it's probably below you.
You know, I don't know there would be a list out there. I mean, that may be something that she could pull, but I... Probably in that range for counties our size. I'm sure Mecklenburg, it's probably a lot more, I would imagine.
Okay, comments, questions? All in favor, or do they have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the request from 350 to 500 compensation for two-year term. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like, aye. Blue item E, administrative items. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. The first one, before I get to amendments, a somewhat complicated issue, but to boil it down, when the schools build or renovate their facilities, typically the county becomes the deed holder. And that's for financing. We receive the money from the state and pay the loan back. And so the banks require that we actually have title to the property. So technically, right now, we have title to McDowell High School. I'm not going to move my office up there anytime soon or anything like that.
I think we wouldn't want to put roofs on that building. We might have to get rid of that pretty quick.
Sure they'd be glad to send us the roofing bill. But typically what happens is that during the closing process, the lender will send a lease. So for the school building, it's actually used for school purposes and not whatever we would use it for otherwise. In this instance, the lender did not send a lease and the school board attorney called that. And again, we have no intention of using it for anything other than what it's being used for, but they're asking, the school board is asking that we allow them to lease at the high school for school purposes. So you have a lease that they have prepared. Mr. Coates has reviewed and we're asking that you approve.
Okay, so the Board of Education attorney has prepared it, the county attorneys reviewed it and said it's fine, standard, and we need to go ahead and take action now. Let's pleasure the board.
Will we approve the lease?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like, aye. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to...
I do have a few amendments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Be very careful on those. GF 12 is for the EMS and facility maintenance departments, transfers, funds between line items. We are moving, there is a pretty large transfer of insurance. We're moving the vehicle insurance for EMS vehicles to that department. It has to do with the cost allotment for Medicaid. GF 13, Human Services and DSS, it covers our workers' comp claims for the year. GF 14 allocates $500 in rental income for the soil and water office that was received. GF 15 allocates donated revenue to the animal shelter. GF 16 allocates asset forfeiture revenue for the sheriff's office. And 911-F1, the 911 fund, appropriates fund balance and transfers between line items in that fund. And you've got those line items there. And that's all the amendments.
Okay, let's pleasure the board.
Move that we approve the amendments.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like, aye. Okay, let's move to the non-collectible accounts. Mr. Wooton?
You do have five non-collectible tax accounts. You've got the listed reasons, bankruptcy, and then four that are past the tenure statute of limitations. You can lump these in with the other tax matters if you'd like. The tax assessor has sent two elderly exemptions. Malovitz and Burns, hopefully I didn't butcher that, that have requested the elderly exemption. And then you have the typical releases, refunds, and rebills as well.
Okay, let's pleasure the board.
Motion, we approve all tax matters.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, like, aye. Okay. Now we cover everything under E now. Mr. Wooton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. Let's move to item G. Let's go, let's pick up assistant comment first. Do we have anyone present who wishes to speak tonight? All right. If so, we need you to sign up, state your name and your topic. There being none.
Eric Lott.
Here's one top. He's going to give a seminar on bear hunting, aren't you, Eric? Or deer hunting, I wanted to tell you. When no one signed up at present, we'll move to New Business, item G, Christmas, New Year's Schedule. Mr. Wooton?
Yes, sir. We just wanted to mention our closings for the Christmas and the New Year holidays. We do, several years ago, we started following the state schedule for Christmas, since so many of our functions are intertwined with the state. And so they were going to close December 25th through the 27th, which is Monday through Wednesday. And so that will be our closing for Christmas. And of course, we'll be closed for New Year's Day, which is January 1st, which is a Monday. Those are our closings for the next few weeks.
Okay, all right. Now, at this time, we're down to our greeting from the board, Christmas greeting from the board and staff. But prior to that, we always, it's customary that our board, we always read, Christmas is all about the birth of a Savior. And of course, we know that as Jesus Christ, and we always read the Christmas story. And so we want to go ahead and Vice Chairman Peters will go ahead and read us tonight the Christmas story out of Luke chapter number two. And then the board will say some final, each board member say a final comments wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. So at this time, Mr. Peters, the floor is yours, sir.
Luke chapter two, verse one, it says, "And it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Cyrenius was governor of Syria, and all went to be taxed, everyone to his own city. And Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was the house and lineage of David. To be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished that she should be delivered. She brought forth her firstborn son and wrapped him in swaddling clothes and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the end. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flocks by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. Where unto you is born this day, in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you: you shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel, a multitude of the heavenly host praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into the heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they had made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things and pondered them in her heart. And the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God for all the things they had heard and seen as it was told unto them. And when eight days were accomplished with circumcision... And when eight days were accomplished for the circumcision of the child, his name was called Jesus, which was so named of the angel before he was conceived, conceived in the womb."
Including your reading, too.
Just want to say, thank you for another good year that we've had here in McDowell County. And from my family, from McPeters family, to the staff, to county employees, to their families, to our county residents, we just want to wish you a very Merry Christmas and we pray that God will truly bless you and that he has blessed you this past year and that he will continue to bless you next year. And just Merry Christmas to everyone.
Commissioner Gray.
Our vice chairman just read from Luke chapter two, the account of Jesus's birth. And I just had the thought, as he was reading, there was no room for him in the inn. It's a sad day that there's still no room. That's where we've come to. But I am proud to serve on a board that our county buildings and our county vehicles say in God we trust. We may disagree on some things, but this is one thing we agree on and that's what's gonna keep us strong. Hoping that everybody out there in McDowell County has a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. Mr. Crawford?
It's truly an honor that I have to serve as a commissioner on this board. I want to thank each and every employee and hope they have a Merry Christmas, especially I want to thank the employees that have to work on Christmas Day and they're away from their families. We have to have those employees to make the county work and I know it's hard, but I appreciate each and everything they do. For my wife, little boy and myself, we want to tell you Merry Christmas and I hope you have a good New Year.
And I'll conclude tonight, just wishing from my wife and three girls, Merry Christmas to everyone and, and we just hope you have a wonderful New Year and the Lord blesses you in all you try to do. And I always put him first and he'll honor you with your, what's going on. So with that being said, let's go ahead and have staff, Mr. Wooten, hear a greeting from here.
Sure. And again, we've mentioned within the last week at the employee, employee dinner, it's an honor to serve the people of McDowell County for myself, but also to serve this board and to, you know, put in the play of what, what you're doing, your best to serve the people. We have a great, just great employees in our, in our different departments and they give their all every day. And we're thankful for them and the job they do. And for my family, my wife and my children, we just thank them for what they do to serve the people of McDowell County. And again, we wish all the people of the county that they have a prosperous New Year and a Merry Christmas.
All right, and, and let's get our clerk to the board. She does an outstanding job in keeping five men, well, six county, county manager going in the right direction and with the proper documentation we need to function in our role and capacities. So Madam Clerk, and she's also fix a real good dessert for us every monthly meeting we get to see her at. So go right ahead there, ma'am.
I think I would just say, joy to the world, the Lord has come. Let every heart prepare for him, Ray. Merry Christmas.
All right. There you have it from our board and our county manager and our clerk. And we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion? Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.